Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Hillsborough Planning Board Public Meeting for October 13th, 2016. You all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Conner.
Here.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hestag.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi.
Here.
And Vice Chairman Julian.
Here.
Okay, next on the agenda is the disposition of minutes. So, the first set of minutes is from September 1st, 2016. Let's take a look at those and then we'll make a motion to approve them.
For the record, just note that Board members Wagner, Deputy Mayor Sarachi, Peason, Deputy Chairman Julian, Chairman Littman, Conrad, Hestag, and Beckerine were present for the September 1st minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we accept the minutes as September 1st meeting, 2016.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, we'll make a motion, all in favor of approval of the minutes from September 1st, 2016. We're gonna do a roll call.
Great, thank you. Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Okay, next are the minutes from October 6th, 2016.
Again, just note for the record, Board members present for that meeting, Dell Core, Vice Chairman Julian, Chairman Lepani, Board Member Con- Conner, Hestag, and Ultimate Beckerine, Alas Wells Forrest.
Okay, need a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Okay, next up on the agenda would be disposition of resolutions, which I don't think we have any, any planning board business, see any special committee reports, any business from the floor. And the other, the next order of business would be the definition and location of utilities for discussion. I know we started to talk about that last time.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I handed that memo out at the last meeting. It's just a matter of when the Board has time discussing the contents of that memo. If there's time at the end of tonight, we could pick it up, or we could take it up at the next meeting when there's time.
Okay. Probably better to, we'll see at the end of the meeting if you have any time, or we could, we could postpone until next time then. Okay, next up on the agenda would be public hearing subdivision site plan applications. First application would be Green Village File 16 PB-12 MJV, Block 141, Lot 30, East Lee Side of Route 206 Highway, applicant seeking preliminary and final major subdivision approval and C-bulk variances for relief from insufficient lot area variances, proposed lot 30.01, 30.02, and 30.03. Insufficient lot frontages varies, proposed lots 30.01 and 30.03, insufficient side setback variances, proposed lots 30.02, buildings number 1, 4, 6, 8, 9, 10, and 11, and proposed lot 30.03. Building number 2, 3, and 22, and number of parking spaces insufficient, proposed lot 30.0 excessive, proposed lot 30.03 to subdivide the existing 50, 50,001,6 acre tract into three proposed lots, Lot 30.01, 8.4161 acres, proposed lot 30.02, 14.527 acres, and proposed lot 30.03, 27.0598 acres, where 40 acres is required. Development application for major site plan approval granted by resolution dated June 7th, 2012 for application, 11 PB-11 SR on property in the GV Green Village zoning district. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alexander Fisher, Moro Savo Camerino Grant and Shaw, representing the applicant, Route 206 Enterprises LLC. I would respectfully request that the Board take jurisdiction of this application and adjourn it to December 8th without further notice. My client would like the opportunity to explain to the Board the purposes of the subdivision and how it would help with financing, and he is not available today. So, I have provided Mr. Maskey with an extension all the way through February 2017, so that's not an issue. And so, I would just respectfully request that the Board adjourn it to December 8th without further notice.
Any comments for anybody?
Mr. Maskey, were you okay for December 8th?
Yes, we are.
Okay. I will make the motion to extend this application till December 8th.
Without, without further.
Without further notice.
Wait a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes, Mr. Conner?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Sarachi?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Julian?
Yes.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next application would be Dukes Parkway LLC/Levinitis. File 16 PB-10 SRV, Block 58.03, Lot 1, formerly known as Block 58, Lot 70, 280 Dukes Parkway East. Applicants seeking preliminary and final major site approval, C-bulk variances for relief from minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum front yard setback for existing building, minimum side yard setbacks for existing and proposed buildings, minimum buffers for existing buildings and parking lot, parking waivers for parking stall size and parking aisle width, and application waivers from providing an environmental impact study, community impact study, and traffic impact study. To renovate the existing 2739 square feet as an office and construct a 2760 square foot pole barn in the rear of the property for storage and construct 10 parking spaces on property in the I-2 light industrial zoning, continued from September 8th, 16 without further notice.
Good evening, John Sullivan from the offices of Astola, and Sullivan representing the applicant. We were last before you on September 8th, and at that time we had indicated that we would like to adjourn the matter to this evening to allow us to get the plans revised and submit some revised plans. We have been able to do that. We have submitted a set of revised plans bearing a revision date of September the 29th. And in particular, the applicant has reduced the size of the building. We've made some other changes to the site to be a little more sensitive to the neighbors, and have also agreed to, to do a full improvement of the front of the building, including the parking lot, to make it a little more aesthetically pleasing. I do have Mr. Schmidt here, who is our engineer. He was previously sworn in, qualified, and he can explain the revisions in further detail.
Okay. Counselor, he was already sworn in, so we're good?
We're good.
Sir, could you repeat your name, please, for the record?
David J. Schmidt, licensed engineer in state of New Jersey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, I want to get the exhibits in. We ended with A, should we go with B today, or?
No, we continue with A.
A.
Whatever the last, do you know what the last one was?
I have A3, I believe was the last one.
So, A4, today's date.
Okay, so we'll mark those in.
Today is the 13th, correct?
Yes, sir.
Correct. A4, October 13th, 2016 is the site plan. It's dated June 8th, 2016, last revised September 29th, 2016. It was what was submitted as a part of the submission package with the Planning Board. We have A5, which is the grading plan, which is dated June 8th, 2016, last revised September 29th, 2016. It was also provided in the submission package with the Planning Board. And we have a current photo of the building that we were going to clean up, was taken, I believe, yesterday. This would be A5.
A6.
A6. A6. This is photo, enlarged photo of the front of the building. So, we have A3, 4, 5, and 6. I just have a brief presentation of what we did. Again, this is Dukes Parkway LLC, Levinitis, Lot 1, Block 5803, physical address, 280 Dukes Parkway East. Site plan, the applicant is proposing to utilize the property for pool and spa business by renovating the existing 2,739 square foot building for use of an office, pump repair, and storage of high-end parts. In the rear of the existing building, we previously proposed a 55 by 70, which was 3,850 square feet, pole barn to the rear of the building for storage of pool, pool repair equipment and supplies. And the pool height was 14 feet. This was revised to a 46 by 60, 2,700, 2,760 square foot building. The pole barn height still remains at 14 feet. It is a 1,090 square feet reduction, or 28 percent. The building was pushed back, if you look at the exhibits, which are pretty far away, was pushed back from the existing building right here to the rear, 18 feet, to accommodate a trash enclosure. What also we did was we moved the building 14 feet to the west. The building's here, we have the residential properties in Manville here. We pushed it 14 feet away to provide a 34-foot buffer to, buffer against the building and prevent, provide more landscaping. The lot coverage was reduced from 47, 10 percent to 45.79 percent. The allowable lot coverage for the zone is 60, so we're well below the lot coverage requirement. We are actually providing 3,690, 95 square feet of new impervious surface coverage. I previously went over all the variances that we're citing. There's a lot of pre-existing variances as the, as the lot is undersized, but I have to make change to note of two variances that I previously cited before, and that is on the side yard setbacks. The new building, since it was shifted, we have different setback requests for variances. A bulk variance is requested from Section 188, 106 of the Township of Hillsborough Land Development Ordinance, area and yard and bulk requirements, one minimums, side yard setback. A 50-foot requirement is proposed, and the side yard setback is 34 to the east. As we shifted the building over, it used to be 20 feet, we now increased it to 34 feet. The second variance that was modified is a bulk variance requested from Section 188, 106 of the Township of Hillsborough Land Development Ordinance, area, yard, and bulk regulations, one minimums, side yard setback 50 feet. The requirement of proposed side yard setback was, was 20, is now 20 feet. It was originally 25 feet. So, we moved it over five feet closer to the Westerly property line, but the Westerly property line, property zone by Manville, there's a Manville pump station, and we figured it'd be better placement to put the commercial building next to the pump station lot and away from the residential properties. I also added to the plans that a design waiver from Section 188-68 of off-street parking and loading of the Township of Hillsborough Land Development Ordinance, dimensions, applicant proposing a 9 by 18 parking spaces where 10 by 20 feet is required, and aisle width of 24 feet for single aisle where 25 feet is required. This was discussed briefly last hearing, and I'm just putting, I added this waiver onto the plans, and we're requesting relief for the parking standards as we're trying to meet the existing parking lot paved area, we're just trying to make it work with what we have. The applicant is proposing the Costanega Building, which we have located here on A3, and I'm inciting this as a pole barn, but more it's like a large shed. This is a, you know, it is a pole barn, but the height of this building is not a very high structure like a pole barn is, would be 20, 25 feet. This building is only going to be 14 feet. What we're planning on doing by shifting the building over 14 feet, there are two large trees that were there, two maple trees. One was 24-inch diameter, and the other one was 28 inches in diameter. By shifting this building over and moving it back, I was able to avoid those two trees so they'll be, you know, remain and also be nice buffering for the adjacent property. By also shifting the building over 14 feet, I guess I'll look at the grading plan, we added a slew of Cypress Leelands and some Norway spruces, and I also added two flowering cherries to block the view of the new barn that's going up. I would think within a two-year timeframe that the Leelands will probably grow and actually shield the whole entire barn.
So, those two other variances are included in the, in the drawings, then?
That is correct.
The bulk variance and side yard setback.
And Maskey has incorrectly added in his memo.
Okay.
In addition, the reason why we moved the pole barn back is we needed a 20-foot separation from both buildings for a trash enclosure. So, I pushed the building back 20 feet so it provides, you know, an area for the fire department to get in, that's their requirement. I also reduced, by pushing it back, I also reduced the size of the building to make it work, and I believe it's a more favorable design than we had previously proposed. In addition to the building reduction, the location filing was revised. As you can see, the front facade we have right here, and deterioration of the pavement areas and the growth that we have in the sidewalk in the front, I put in the plans that the parking lot will be repaved and resurfaced to the satisfaction of the township engineer. The parking lot will be restricted to one-way movements, signage and painted directional hours are provided. The traffic patterns will be in a counterclockwise direction, with the easterly driveway as the entrance, and as I mentioned, the parkway will be resurfaced. So, this is Dukes Parkway down here. You have two access points in the area. We're using the western axis as the entrance in, you come in, and you circle out. I added also on the grading plan, pavement and building notes, added to the plans would specifically call out what the applicant intends to do in regards to resurfacing the parking lot, cleaning up the building. Is also noted that all the outside storage will be removed. One of the conditions Maskey had in his memo was the conservation easement, which is located in the rear. We're encompassing the wetlands and wetland buffers and the conservation easements. At the turning points, we're putting conservation easement markers. It is shown on the plans that the markers will be provided. We also provided the conservation marker easement detail to the plans.
That's signage, or?
That's typical signs that you put to show that you can't go back there.
Right, okay.
The fire chief, Marshall, had concerns about the cartway width along the west of the access point. Right here, we have, right now it's currently 13 feet paved, we added additional two feet pavement, which now provides a 15-foot cartway width, this is to the satisfaction of the fire chief. We also had some issues with the handicap parking, wasn't in accordance with the 2% code for the ADA. I provided a grading plan, which is on the bottom of the grading plan, which is a detailed 1 to 10 scale that has spot elevations, or proposed spot elevations, to demonstrate that a 2% slope will be maintained through the handicap area, and when they resurface, we will have the handicap access in accordance with the ADA requirements. Lighting was another concern that the applicant, the township engineer had, is that we had insufficient lighting for the, for this property. And what was, what I was trying to get avoided is this is a seasonal business, and that the most, most likely that the applicant or the owner of the property will be out of here at dusk, and I was thinking if I could seek a waiver from that. I understand through the Board that that would not happen, that I would need additional lighting. So, what I did is I provided a light.
Must be a pretty heavy light. Yeah. Little top-heavy.
Looks better that way, doesn't it?
Yeah. Okay, I think you're back in business.
Along Dukes Parkway, I added a light right in the center of the lot to provide the necessary lighting patterns that is required for a parking area, and I also added another light pattern, or a light to the rear of the building to give sufficient adequate lighting for the rear of the property. In Mr. White's memo, he has issues with the type of light I have, and I will meet the requirements of the township engineer and the type of light that he wants, but we will meet the lighting requirements for a parking lot.
We're looking for a cutoff fixture so there's not a lot of glare, and it's lies wall packs just glare outward. You have residents that are right nearby, so we're trying to protect them. And also, the pole fixture provided between the roads and the parking lot needs a house-size shield, so there's not a lot of light spilling onto the roadway.
Okay.
We have agreed to that.
And you agreed to that?
Since we are minimizing the trees to be removed, which are substantial, it's the most, you knock down a 26-inch tree, it's a six-tree replacement. Two of those trees, we are now reducing the amount of trees that we need to place because we're not cutting as many trees down. So, I eliminated a lot of the trees out of the wetland, or all the trees out of the wetland buffer area, which was somewhat of a concern of the Environmental Commission. And I also changed the species of the trees to be maples, which is in accordance with the ordinance requirement for tree mitigation. Agency approvals, we have Hillsborough Township Fire Official, he approved the latest plans, that was dated October 11th. We still are seeking an NJDEP flood hazard area permit. Somerset County Planning Board, we added the entrance notes and details that is required. Unfortunately, the county engineer was away on vacation before I could nail down the right-of-way dedication, but we agreed to put the right-of-way dedication in accordance with Somerset County. Somerset Union Soil Conservation District has approved this application or this, these plans. Unfortunately, I did make changes by pushing it back, and I have to ask for recertification, but I don't see a problem with that. DNR Canal Commission issued a letter that we are exempt, and we have received an NJDEP freshwater wetlands LOI. As far as the memos that we just recently received, I have one from the township engineer, Mazur Memorandum dated October 12th, 2016. The applicant agrees to comply with all the comments, with the exception of the foundation plannings. And Township Planner David Maskey's memorandum of October 7th, 2016, the applicant agrees to comply with all comments in his memorandum. And that's, that's pretty much what I addressed.
Mr. Maskey, have any?
Could you just describe the trash enclosure, how you're going to screen it, and what you're going to enclose it with?
We did provide a detail.
Could you describe that, please?
Sure. The enclosure is 10 by 15, and we have two gates provided in the front.
Thank you. Just to confirm, some testimony from the last hearing, there'll be no outside storage on this site, correct?
That is correct.
And there'll be no chemicals stored in the shed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. White?
What kind of delivery vehicles are we coming to this site? Because you said you'd be storing some, it was said, high-end parts, as well as doing pump repairs, so I'm assuming you're going to need parts for that. What kind of vehicle can we expect to circulate to the back of this site?
I'm thinking your typical UPS truck and FedEx trucks that will be delivering.
So, a single-unit vehicle?
Single-unit vehicle.
Can it make the turn through that back there?
Yes, it can.
So, then if a single unit can make it, the garbage truck can make it too.
I didn't check it to the garbage truck, but I'm assuming it will.
Can you verify that?
Well, I will verify it.
As a condition, the Board should ask for that. Hours of operation? Can we get clarification on that? Could I also like on the plans that there's never any questions in the future?
I prefer the applicant, he would be better fit to.
Okay.
Counsel, do you have any comment on that, or?
Well, I wanted to clarify on the record also, because I dropped to our notes, I wasn't here at the last meeting, unfortunately, and my counterpart took copious notes, but nowhere did I see any about hours of operation.
I have it on the plans, but I'll confirm, he is here. The hours of operation are on Sheet 2 on the site plan. I have Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and opposed Sunday.
Is that near?
That's all. Good. Thank you.
You all right with that?
Well, that's.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Maybe we should just clarify that, I think that's office hours. Kevin, would you come forward?
Yes.
And clarify that? Mr. Levinitis was previously sworn at the last meeting.
Okay.
Yes, that's the office hours. Elizabeth gets there at 9:00, and she actually completes at 4:30. The guys get there at 7:30, get their schedule, then go load, and they're out by like 8:00, 8:30.
Okay. So, that's Monday through Friday, or?
That's Monday through Friday, and Saturdays we work May and June.
Okay, Sundays?
No, never on Sunday.
Okay.
And what time do the trucks come back?
They come back various times. They can come back between 3:30 and 7:30 at night. All depends on what time they finish their day. But when they return, they literally lock their trucks down and sleep for the night.
All right, thank you, sir. Anything else, Mr. White?
No, I have nothing further.
Okay.
Bill, they still need the flood hazard permit, correct?
It goes without saying, yes.
Yeah, that is. We know we still have to wait on approval from DEP for a flood hazard permit.
Correct.
That's coming down the pipe, so.
Anybody else?
Well, I just have one comment. I went there and looked at the property, I mean, we had some comments from the neighbors there around, and what I took back from the comments before was, this is a very low-lying area, and I did not see that personally. I wish we had the elevations for, for you and the neighboring properties, just to see where we're at. I mean, what I observed was, like, everything was pretty level back there. It's, am I wrong?
It's a 2%, there's a, there's slope, I mean, it's easy.
It's less than, it's like nothing between you and the neighbors.
Right. It's between 1% to 2%, it's a flat, flat piece of property.
Yeah, that's, that's what I, I did note of, I mean, I just wanted clarification on that.
And the flow is, is a sheet flow, and it's running from front to back, and the wetland area is right here, so the flow is just flowing right back to the wetland area.
Yeah, but it's like next to nothing, am I wrong?
It's flat, I mean, it's.
Yeah, that's why. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schmidt, proposed conditions, which way will the flow be flowing?
Same direction.
Thank you.
Were you able to indicate the flood hazard boundaries on the map?
We have the flood, 100-year flood hazard on the map. The AE zone is located at a dark line that runs to the rear of the property. We're going to do a detailed analysis for the flood hazard, and generally, that's a foot above. foot above the 100-year flood line. And I have it highlighted on the plans, but that would be in the front of the building and around. But we will do more detailed investigation with that. I have to get the NJDEP, if they're, which I'm assuming the Raritan River has, but you have to get the flood profiles from NJDEP, and that will give me the elevations for the flood hazard. If there isn't any profiles, then I go one foot up, and that would be my flood hazard. The issue we have is, this is a, the flooding that we're getting, is the Raritan River is actually in the north, it's down low.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And what happens is the Raritan River flows, and when it gets a lot of rain, it then reaches out and then runs to the rear of the property. So the floodway and the flood fringe is all in the front of the property, this is just an overflow when you get more than six inches of rain. You get seven inches of rain, seven and a half. Now, unfortunately, you know, the homeowners that were there have been exposed to two major storms, anomalies, so to speak. I was at a seminar in May 2016, Joe Scoopian was the instructor, and we were going over certain, you know, forgetting, more credits, he was one of the presenters, and what we were going over is the, you know, the effect of these storms, they're all around the same, and then you get to 1999, and you get a high peak, and that's because that was Hurricane Floyd, and that was 13 inches of rain. And then you go, you know, 12 years later, you have another peak, and that is Hurricane Irene. Now Hurricane Irene was 10 inches, and it wasn't considered the most rainfall, but August was the wettest month we've ever had on record. We had 17.6 inches of rain in August. Now you get, which I have, if you get the data of all the months, you will not find, except until 1955, where there was 11.44 inches of rain for one month. That's the highest I could find. So, I mean, Irene, by far, was the worst storm that we ever experienced, and I remember it. As far as hurricanes, I mean, Floyd was 13 inches, you have to go back to 1939, and they didn't even name the storms back then, that was a 14.8 rainfall. So, you know, these residents have really experienced very hardship with two of the most worst storms in our area. So I understand the flooding aspect of it, but I also, you know, you have a Raritan River, again, this is one of the biggest streams you have in Hillsborough, 490 square miles of drainage area, with 313, which is 313, 313,000, or 100,000 acres, it's huge. And they experienced, you know, what we call the 100-year storm, which is just 1% occurrence a year. That's what the 100-year storm is, doesn't mean it happens every 100-year, it could happen 1%. They experienced what is called, kind of like, it was actually more than a 500-year storm, which is 1.2%. So they basically got hit by lightning twice, is that, they experienced two storms, back-to-back, within a very short time period, two major storms affecting the property for which, you know, major damage is done by flooding, four feet of flooding probably, is what I'm guessing. So I understand it, but, you know, we're still, I mean, the gist of the seminar I went to is, you have these two anomalies, you just got to pay attention and see if this anomaly keeps on continuing. But.
Yeah, and that's a deperview to DEP.
That's correct.
I understand. Okay.
So Chairman, just one more thing, so that the board's aware. This application went to the Environmental Commission on July 25th, and they did issue some comments, but because the plan was revised, it was recommended that the applicant go back to the Environmental Commission to let them see the new plans. That won't be until the end of this month, the last Monday of the month. So that's up to the board how they want to handle that, but just so you know, they will be going back to the Environmental Commission at the end of this month.
We anticipate, based on their comments from last time, that we'll be able to comply with whatever they have, so we certainly would not oppose a condition. If in fact it turns out that there is something that we can't comply with, we would come back to this board.
So we could put that in the condition of approval if we decide?
Yeah, well, one of the things that I'm used to with the Environmental Commission is the wetlands and wetland buffers, and I did move the building closer to the, well, since I shifted it over and back, the wetlands are skewing closer to my building. I have noted on the plans that the orange construction fence shall be located and state at the wetland buffer prior to any disturbance, so that will not violate the buffer when they're building the building. I mean, the building's seven feet away from the buffer line, which should be sufficient enough room for that, to build basically a corner of the building.
Right.
And then as it moves closer to Duke's Parkway Road, you get a bigger and bigger buffer, so.
Yeah, because I remember last time there was a concern with the trees being in the potential wetland, so those are not there now.
They're not there now.
Right, okay. And the flood hazard boundary, we talked about being on the plans.
I referenced it in my memo back to the board, that it's, if there are no profiles, then it's one foot, it could be more, but we will be doing a lot more detailed study with the flood plane issues when we submit to DEP.
Right, you still have to go for the flood hazard permit?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? All right, so at this point, we want to open the floor to the public, so please, please be noted that questions are to the engineer, and specific to this engineer, so if there's other questions that are not pertinent to the engineer, we'll allow you to speak at the end, so if you can please limit your dialogue to the engineer. If you raise your hand, we'll call you up, and you can speak into the mic, state your name and address. Yes, sir? I'm sorry, we need a motion to open to the public.
Motion open the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Stephen Zeharko, 1324 Gress Street. For the engineer, I noticed that he touched on the base of the flood hazard level. I'm also interested in the zero net fill. According to his plans, it shows that the 100-year flood line is at 47 feet. According to the flood hazard level law, which is a 100-year flood, which is in the case here, that he is allowed to increase one foot above the flood hazard law. Looking at his printout here, it shows that the location of the proposed pole barn is at 45 feet. So that tells me he has to raise it three feet out in that particular area, which would make it one foot over the 47-foot line. By doing that, the zero net fill stating that any kind of addition of fill to an area has to be compensated by some kind of a retention pond or another area. I calculated that as being approximately 8,000 cubic feet of added soil, and once you figure it out, it comes out to be 20-foot by 20-foot by 20-foot retention basin. Nowhere on the, on the plans does he show a retention plan, so I'm just wondering if, are you aware of the net fill, zero net fill requirement?
Yes.
All right, but you had mentioned only approximately one foot is going to be increased for the pole barn, whereas the indication here is that it has to be one foot above the 100-year flood line, and if the pole barn is going to be at a 45-foot line, you have to increase it by three feet. Am I correct?
I'm not sure if you're correct on that. Could use a microphone. There are many options that we can go with, as you're saying. I'm sure, I'm not sure that we have to have it above the 100-year flood line, but we have options of where we're putting the flood vents in, or we have options that we don't even have, the first floor we leave open, and it's just a roofed enclosure. So we're going to explore every option we possibly have, and if the plans change dramatically, as always, you know, we will have another trip back to the board. And then they would have to say that these plans have been substantially changed, and then we would show another revised plans of what we did to get these DEP approvals.
Next comment question, by moving the pole barn further into the wetlands, it is actually in the wetlands.
It is not in the wetlands.
According to a photo I have that was given to us right after Irene, it shows that the whole area behind the original building is wetlands. I have made a copy, I can submit it as evidence.
You can submit it as evidence, but what you're saying is, a puddle of water is wetlands, and that's not how it works. You have vegetation that needs to be there, and you also need the soil type that needs to be there, and both of those didn't comply to make it wetlands. There are augers that they've taken in those areas, so you might see water lying there, it doesn't always mean that it is a wetland area. You have to have a water table, you have to have the vegetation to also have, to be considered a wetlands, and the DEP did go out there, and they agreed with our environmentalists.
And when the DEP went out there on December 16th, I checked that the, at that point, the month of December had less than half an inch of rain, so they were not looking at what we see most of the time.
No, 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 no. It's not the water. You put an auger in, and you look at the soil, and you can tell by the soil if there's organic growth in there, and that is what is telling you that the water has been standing there for a long time. It doesn't have to be a rainy day, it doesn't have to, it's.
I understand that.
Right, so it doesn't have to do with water being there.
But at the same time, we witnessed this.
But that's not considered wetlands for DEP.
Will you allow me to submit that photo?
You can submit the photo.
Okay. And... The gentleman, oh, I'm sorry, may I address Mr. Conrad?
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Were you the gentleman, am I allowed? Okay. Were you the gentleman who came out to the site on September 11th at about 1:30 p.m.?
Jeez.
Do you drive a dark-colored SUV?
No.
Okay. Someone was out there.
Okay.
There is a difference in the height of the property. If you were out there recently, you saw that it was all overgrown. You, just, I can't even tell the difference unless I see from a different angle. If you saw it from the back of the property is one thing, you'd have to see it from Gress Street, where you can actually see the level actually drop, and according to the elevation here, it drops almost two feet from the back of the property.
Yeah, SUV, two and a half, yeah. The building is at, the rear of the building is at 46, 47, and depending, if you're past Gress Street, that's 45, so that's a foot and 0.91.
Okay.
That, for me, that's not a significant pitch. Usually, that is still considered flat.
But it could be, once the building is built, if the building is built, because then it takes away a lot, it adds more impervious services, surfaces because you're adding the pole barn, you're adding additional concrete, and you're adding the enclosure for the dumpster.
We're adding no more than 4,000 square feet of impervious surface coverage, that's the most that we're proposing at this time, and it's not going to increase. You know, when we submit this to DEP, we might have, end up with a smaller building, depending on the flood hazard rules and how I have to get this fitted, but it won't be any bigger.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public?
Do we want to enter that photograph in?
Counsel.
This was handed to me from the DEP.
Your name, please?
Paul Zeharko. So this was handed to me.
You have to state your name and where you live, please.
1324 Gress Street, where a lot, one of the lots on the paper. I had requested that the DEP come down to tell us, right after Hurricane Floyd, where the retention basin was in the wetland, because in the 1980s, the wetland was changed to what it is today. It was a river, it was a stream, very little, very small stream, now it's this football-field-sized wetland. And so when he had come down, because what had happened right after Floyd, we had another storm, and I had requested the mayor, Mamville, come down to see that when it rained, the neighbors next door, I was actually standing in ankle-deep water. Now, I'd show you the picture, but my sister isn't here to prove it, she took the picture, so we took the picture out. But, so this is a map showing where the wetlands are and where the flood areas were during the storm, and so that's why we have the map.
Right.
So when the DEP pulled in, he said to me, we wanted to show him exactly, I wanted him to show me exactly where this retention basin was, and he said, no, you are not allowed to walk on the wetlands against the wall. So we never got out there, so that's why I got the map.
Do you have a question for the applicant?
You know, we're looking at this, and everything is a wetland, you know, listening to where the building's going in, you're putting it in water. I mean, if this person is trying to get a business going, it's, it's just that you see someone trying to start something, and you're actually putting him more into a bad situation than out. The building was made as a dairy in the 60s, and it's a much higher building area, you're safer keeping everything inside your building than trying to put it out in that wetland, believe me. But that's what, but that's why we have the map.
Okay.
Did she state exactly who offered the map?
No, I don't think so.
It doesn't say, it's just a.
What, what is it? Is it a delineation map, or?
It's a overall delineation map of, from the website, showing water bodies, wetlands, 2002, and it cross-hatches wetlands from an aerial photograph that was taken in 2002.
Okay.
It's somewhat similar, I mean, it shows the wetlands.
I mean, you have an LOI in right now.
Right. This is, this is basically, yes.
There's their building.
No, our building's right there.
This is my home, okay, this is my home, this is Mamville's pumping station, that's the building.
Right, right. This is, like, this is the beginning of what you would do when you look, research doing a property.
Correct.
This allies preliminary wetland areas. It's not what the DEP, the DEP, what they would look at to start, and then it would go out to the site, and then it would look at my data and all the soil logs that we've provided, and the map is showing about right here is where the DEP line is, which is about 50 feet off of where our line is. So it's, you know, this is to a scale of, not saying zero to .28 miles, so the degree of accuracy is exactly what it is.
Okay, but I know you have a current LOI.
We have a current LOI.
Mr. Schmidt, how was that line determined? Maybe from aerial photography with infrared?
I would think, well, usually it's aerial photography, and it's also probably by the soil, the SES soil mapping.
Well, isn't it tough, typically also infrared photography to establish a line, but you couldn't put that line on your plan and have DEP approve it for an LOI, correct?
That is correct.
You have the three standards you have to provide and show for to get an LOI.
That's correct. You could not hand this in and get an LOI at all. There is field investigation, photographs, soil logs, all that has to be done.
So an LOI is more accurate?
Very more accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, please go up to the mic and state your name and address, please.
My name is Kristy Amon, I live at 1320 Gress Street, and my question for you is, have you ever driven through the town of Manville after a flood? Have you ever witnessed the devastation in the town?
I have. I'm actually a local engineer that has designed many of the culverts in Hillsborough Township, Montgomery Township, and I, not to say I enjoy, I don't enjoy flooding, but I do keep track of it, and this application is not enhancing or creating a. is not enhancing or creating a worsened situation.
Have you driven through the town of Manville recently and seen how close the properties that have been removed through the Blue Acres program come to your property?
No.
Very close, within blocks. And my question for you is, how are you going to clean up our neighborhood when you move in and you put another building blocking the area that, the only area that the water has to go? How are you going to clean up our neighborhood when we get more water because of the next flood?
Well, I think we're, you know, you have, the worst-case scenario you guys have experienced was the .2 percent. I mean, you've experienced two major floods back-to-back within a 12-year span.
I experienced eight feet of water in my basement. I still have rings around my light bulbs in my basement from the water level.
But what we're proposing is a more, I mean, beautiful, cleaner building that you're going to see every, every day.
Believe me, as much as I would love to see that area cleaned up, I would much rather it remain as an area for water to go instead of in my home.
But we're putting, you know...
4,000 square feet of building and product that is going to block what the water has to go.
One more minute of time, please. Okay, we're only proposing a 2,700-square-foot building. It's not 4,000. 4,000 is the area of impervious, that doesn't eat up the area. We're also adding flood vents, and so what that means is the water can just blow right through, and not, the building will stay intact. So we're not eating up the volume that we're actually taking up for 2,700, 2,760-square-foot building.
Okay. I do have pictures that I brought from Hurricane Irene that do show the origination of the water being the property that they planned to build on. So if you're willing to take those pictures, I would like to give them for evidence.
There's no objection.
Any objection?
You can't get them back.
I don't need that.
Okay, just want you to know.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll submit those for the record.
Okay.
Can you just give a little more descriptive, how many photos are there?
I can count, I don't know. Can we just mark the...
Got some of those.
Yeah.
They're all, they're time-lapsed photos. I've marked the back of each of them with the hurricane, the date, and our address, and the time that the picture was taken.
Are they all from the same time?
They're all, the photos began at 11:14.
I mean, the same date, I should say.
The same date, yes.
What was the date?
They are all from August 28th, 2011.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's one...
Did you take those, I'm sorry?
I took all of them, yes. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, 12.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one and then two.
Okay. All right, we got those. Any other questions from the public? Sir? Please state your name and address and speak into the mic.
Tom Riley, 1316 Gress Street in Manville. And my question to the engineer, and I guess to the owner, to the applicant, is, have you explored the idea of, and I'll use the word repurpose, repurposing the existing building? At the last hearing, what we heard from the owner was that the majority of the work is done on-site. He goes out to the site and he determines what the pool layout should be, and if, and correct me if I'm wrong, but what we heard was that he was only going to use a very, very small fraction of the office space inside of the building. So my question is, okay, we've got a building here, we have a lot of square feet in the building that are going to be, underutilized is a kind term, nonutilized is a more likely term to be used. Why not repurpose the existing building to store and to do the pump work that you're going to do, rather than putting up a new structure with impervious service, surface, excuse me, to go along with the, with the construction? That's my question.
I don't know, is that an engineering question?
Kevin's answer that.
Do you have the applicant come up? Just grab that mic, please.
The current building would not be big enough to house all our equipment. We would use a pump room, as we described about, to do repairs and store some high-end parts, but it's nowhere near big enough to do, to storage facility that we need.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Stevens Zaharko, 1324 Gress Street. I was going to wait until the end. I have photos also to submit.
Okay, do you have any questions for this applicant?
Right now, no.
Okay.
Shall I wait till the end?
Uh, wait till the end, we can take them now. And we can take them now.
Okay, 20 photos.
20 photos? And what are, where are they photos of?
They are photos from Floyd, from '99, and also after Irene, and also a storm that was in between the two. Many of them showing, if not our properties, neighbor's properties, and the applicant's properties underwater.
Who took the pictures?
I took one, the rest were taken by my wife. We're both present here.
Okay, we will make that part of the record.
Thank you.
Oh, great.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're going to make a motion to close the public?
Some votes.
Second?
Second, but, but, Mr. Chairman, I ask that we give us five minutes to review this.
Okay, you want to take a look at the pictures?
Yeah, I want to take a look at the pictures.
So we'll keep it open to the public in the meantime?
So.
Okay, let's keep it open, take a few minutes to look at the pictures.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back in session.
Hold on one second.
Okay, so we were, we had the public, it was open to the public, and we had a opportunity to look at some of the pictures. So it still remains open to the public at this point. Does anybody else from the public have any comments? Come on up to the mic. State your name and address again, please.
Stevens Zaharko, 1324 Gress Street. According to the original application, the hours operation, as noted today by Mr. Levinitis, was nine to five on Monday through Friday, Saturday nine to three, and supposedly that was primarily for the office, even though it wasn't noted like that in the office. And he indicated there were going to be six employees, or a maximum of six employees, from morning to evening. Now, to me, evening states after 6 o'clock. He did mention something about 7 o'clock. I'm used to sleeping late. Now, if he's saying that 7:30 in the morning, there's going to be trucks there, engines running, I don't know what kind of piping he has. Is it metal? Is it plastic? Does somebody like to play salsa music on the radio while they're solving? I don't know. I'm very, very much against that. He's going to have to find better hours. Next, pole barn to store, pool repair equipment, jackhammers, fittings, pipe, and new equipment. According to Mr. Riley that spoke recently, if you take all that equipment, isn't this building, like, too huge? Can't he just simply put it someplace else, like, for example, in a storage facility, Bob Storage? Right? It would be out of the way, and... That's all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments from the public at this time? Okay, seeing none. I'd like to take a, take a motion to close the public, close it to the public at this time.
Some move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel, we were, we were discussing the fact that we know you're going to be in front of the Environmental Commission on October 24th, and you're going to, you're going to, you're going to meet with the Environmental Commission to go over the resubmitted plans. Correct. So at this point, would you consider carrying this application over until after you meet with the Environmental Commission? And any comments from the Environmental Commission be addressed at that meeting by the Environmental Commission? You have an opportunity to do that at that point, and then come back here, and so the board can then review if there's any additional comments that the Environmental Commission would have in, pertinent to the resubmital of the application, and also knowing, we also would like to know what your status is in terms of submitting the flood hazard permit. Is that something you're going to do shortly, and how long that would take? So two, two points.
I'm going to ask Mr. Schmidt to address the flood hazard, and while he's doing that, I'm going to just speak to Mr. Levinitis a moment, and I'll answer the first part of the question.
Just, sorry to interrupt, but just so the board knows, schedule-wise, the next available meeting would be November 10.
We are anticipating submitting to the DEP right after we have approval from, if we have an approval from the, from the planning board. We're ready to submit. A few polls have been drafted, and it's just a matter of Kevin signing it, and let me go, and I'll do it.
Do you require board approval to apply for the flood hazard permit?
Board...
Planning board.
No, not that I know of. We do notify the planning board, and we notify the Environmental Commission when we submit to NJDEP and the adjacent property owners.
Do we have no objection to coming back on November 10th after we've been before the Environmental Commission?
Okay. So I think it would be a good idea to go to the Environmental Commission, review the plans that you've updated, and address any comments that they would have, either on, you know, the updated plans and/or, you know, your application in terms of flood hazard permit, or any other questions that they may have.
What is your schedule for applying for the flood hazard permit? Can you give us some timeframe when you'd be submitting?
I would say December.
Are you going to wait till after the board?
After the board. Yes.
Why is that again, please?
Why is that? Money. It's very expensive to put these applications together and not knowing that you're putting something together and submitting it, and you don't have board approval.
But it's not required, correct?
It's not required.
Is there any chance, well, never mind.
So, I mean, yeah, that would have to be a condition of approval, you know, based on the fact of any comments the Environmental Commission has, and then if that was resolved, then, you know, the application would be based on approval of that permit.
That's correct.
Makes sense.
And the adjacent property owners are notified that the submission has been made, and that the whole submission package that we submitted to DEP is also on file at the planning board.
Correct.
Or actually, not the planning board, I think it would be at the township clerk.
Does anybody have anything to add, counsel, or... Okay, so I think we need to make a motion.
Motion to continue the meeting, continue this hearing until November the 10th, no further notice.
Some move?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the applicant will be coming back on November 10th. I will see you on the Environmental Commission as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda, I don't know if you have any correspondence, I don't know if I saw any correspondence. I know we had the, I don't know if you want to talk about the definition and location of utilities now, or...
It's up to you.
Or you want to continue to kind of look at that, and we can carry that to another meeting? Anybody have any opinion on that?
Here, I'm asking that people will review it.
Okay.
There's no comments till next meeting?
Okay.
I would agree. Probably have more people in, also, more input.
Okay. So we need a motion, or carry it, or just, or just carry it?
Carry it to the November 3rd meeting.
Okay.
I believe we need to cancel the business meeting. Yes, the October 27th business meeting, do you want to, does the board want to cancel that meeting?
Sure.
I would say so, right?
Twist her arms.
All right, so we need a motion to cancel the October 27th, 2016 Planning Board Business Meeting?
Move to cancel.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting is canceled.
Next meeting's November 3rd, November 3rd. We have the Glengarry application and a subdivision of Levantino. And then November 10th, we'll be back with the application we had tonight.
Duke Park, Levinitis. Okay. All right, anything else, or make a motion to adjourn?
Some move to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.